What's going on everybody? Welcome back, this is the Thursday local show. I am Carter Hammond, host, locally sourced. If y'all could do a solid really quick and just hit up the Patreon, become a supporter of his channel, do a lot of content every week and talk about some deep issues. So if you feel like it's worth it and you've got like two to five bucks a month to spare, consider throwing it at it. Follow us on Twitter, like us on Facebook, follow us on Instagram, all that good jazz. Head down into the lower corner here, you can hit subscribe, little bell for notifications. Now that all that's out of the way, I'm excited as usual, uh, because today, today is special. Today is actually special. Because it's the very first time that I'm doing a panel discussion. Um, and we'll see how it goes because I didn't like necessarily do a whole lot of planning on the technical side ahead of this. So it's, you know, I'll probably be a little bit scrappy, but it's all good. Today, joined by Anna McGinnis, Zach Green and Jonah Wheeler. Uh, we are going to be discussing the letter that was sent to the select board by the three of them representing, uh, also the Rural Youth Union, uh, and sort of the, the response to the resignation of Karen Hatcher, uh, from the Peterborough Town Select Board. And then we're also inevitably going to have to discuss the pro police rally that's going to happen this weekend. And the theft of BLM signs that spans the entire town. So, um, without any further delay, here we are, everybody. Welcome to the show. How y'all doing?
Good, good. Hi, hello.
Yeah, very well.
Good, good. I'm glad to hear it guys. So, alright, um, I guess first off, Karen resigned, um, kind of a big deal. Where are you all at with that? Like just generally speaking, where do you guys feel like, like, how do you feel like the effect of the protests and engagement? Do you think that that had any impact on her resignation? If not, what do you think did? I mean, I'm just curious as to sort of like what the assessment on this is.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just go first.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Anna, why don't you take, take it?
Um, it was never for sure. The, at least it was never my intent um, to have any of the members of the select board resign. I don't think it was ever on, on the list of demands that any of us discussed to have Karen resign. And so I think it definitely came as a shock to see her resign and it for a minute for me, it was definitely uncomfortable because I was thinking to myself, you know, I, I don't know what happens next and I don't know who's going to end up in that spot and was this something I wanted to happen? Why is, why is this happening? Was sort of what I was thinking because Karen was always somebody that I had worked pretty close with in the past on projects, but was also somebody that as the movement for black lives gained momentum in town that I had had trouble accessing and that I had had trouble knowing exactly where she was at. And so as things sort of became more overwhelming and that sort of body of emails in her inbox grew related to that movement in town, I think she sort of made herself the point person for that movement. She was the person to contact after the listening sessions. Uh, that like community at Peterborough. Oh, am I frozen?
No, it's okay. I think I just had to skip on my head.
That community at Peterborough NH email was like the email to contact and Karen was the person on the other side. And I can understand how that could really quickly become too much for one person.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't know, for I, 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 guys feel free to jump in. I mean, I was definitely a little surprised. There was a huge part of me that was like, dang, that was probably, you know, it's, it's unfortunate because that was, as you pointed out, sort of like the point person, you know, Karen was, was the one that we often spoke with, whether we agreed or not, at least, you know, she was showing up for it. So, yeah, I mean, I know, I like Zach and Johnny, you both had a decent amount of correspondence too. What, what was your takeaway on it?
I, I just hoped that, um, I mean, my first thought was that I hope we can continue doing the work that we've been doing with the select board. Cause I know at least in my personal experience, I haven't had much, if any correspondence with Tyler or Bill. And from what I've seen other people, uh, when they talk to them, it seems that it gets pushed off to the side and not necessarily like they're not going to do it, but it seems like, uh, you know, a different response is always from Bill and Tyler than we got from Karen. So I just hope that we like, uh, can continue this work and can continue the progress that Karen had laid the foundation for, it seemed like. Uh, and I hope that the select board kind of remains transparent, like as transparent as they were. In this process of finding a new select board member, which I guess we'll talk about with the letter that we wrote.
Yeah, yeah. Zach, any final thoughts on that?
Um, I mean, you know, right after George Floyd, like Karen was kind of the first person to, I mean, she met with, uh, myself and another community member, um, in Putnam Park to start a, kind of start that dialogue and getting to work. So it showed to me that, you know, she was willing to put in the time and make the space and, and to be part of the community. Things have certainly escalated since then. Um, we, you know, I, I think in our activism have definitely escalated things, but I don't think that should have dissuaded, you know, her from wanting to, uh, work with us. It should have encouraged her that our passion, like, it, it would have been nice to see that, you know, um, her passion would follow ours, um, potentially. But, you know, I, I think too, and like I'm coming to realize like that the select board, we kind of assume that they have a lot of, um, power in, in how we structure this town and they certainly have more than a lot of the residents here, but it's, it's not like, like, we don't have a mayor, like we don't have, um, you know, that kind of government here. What we have is the select board and unfortunately, and as much as Karen was working with us and being that point person and being vocal, um, you know, there were at least a handful of times where she kind of threw up her hands. Um, so I guess I should have taken that as a warning sign that maybe this was not the work for her. And I, and I think like in a town like Peterborough, when you step into that office, you're not, not only you, um, not expecting a pandemic, but you're not expecting this explosion of racial justice activity, um, to really come to a head when it's been completely null in Peterborough for, uh, you know, as long as I can remember.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I definitely, definitely. Um, I mean, I think, you know, this brings up, to me, it brings up an interesting issue of like, you, like you're, to your point of we don't have a mayor, like we don't have a single person. So it divides that responsibility. So we could have Karen as a point person and we can go through and she can try and do everything that she needs to. She has to clear that with two other people. And I'm not saying that Bill or Tyler ever stood in her way. Generally, my understanding was that they had a pretty like good working relationship between the three of them. But like, you know, I, there's part of me that wonders if like the, you know, just like, the, yeah, like the amount of heat that comes from like having such a public, you know, gaffe, like what happened at the readout, like, you know, the report out session, it's like, you know, it's one thing in national politics, but when you start talking about it in a town, it's like, this is like, it, like, it has a very intense repercussion here for us on like a, an immediate level, you know what I mean?
Yeah, you can't hide from that. Um, I think, you know, there were 70, 80 people in that Zoom call that were really looking for leadership and, um, I think that was our first kind of instance of like, we don't have the appropriate, uh, facilitators for this kind of conversation. And it's not baked into any kind of training or any kind of, um, you know, guidelines for what the select board or select people should be capable of. Um, and you know, like, it should go without saying, like as humans, we should have that capacity and it is a lot of work and like, but we had not only just Karen and, but a few others in that meeting, uh, that represent the town saying, we've never done this before. And it was just like, that's a non excuse, you know, and, and that was really unfortunate to see. And like, you know, weeks after we started to hear from Karen and she, you know, she was calling out, you know, calling people, I had a phone call with her, had a lot of emails back and forth and she, you know, in good faith, she was really trying to, um, put together some kind of action plan. Was it to the level that we are expecting? Not really. Um, but, um, it was definitely a beginning. So now we're in this position to bring it up to today, like where we don't know who's going to carry that forward because we haven't heard from Bill or Tyler largely because Karen was the point person. But also we don't know where they were in that dialogue. And given the way that they're set up, they can't communicate outside of select board meetings as far as we know. So like, yeah, it's hangs in the balance right now.
Well, and I think this is actually a good opportunity to kind of get to the actual letter because this is like, that's that, like this issue of communications is like, it's sort of a running thing that we're going to have to continue to deal with in responding to the response, like so on and so forth. So, um, let's see here, this is the, uh, the email that was sent out. So do you guys want to just take a minute to sort of explain? I mean, I've got it up here so people can read it on the screen, but also just sort of go over the contents of it and, you know, for anybody that's just listening in. I know that Anna, maybe, maybe you'd be a good person to start.
Just go over what it's literally like.
Yeah, just, just the contents. Like if, you know, if, if, if somebody's not going to have the time to, you know, if we don't want to read the whole thing out fully, like if you, just summarize the contents of it just for the audio.
Yeah, essentially, um, what we go over in the letter is, um, that we, we sort of establish what's happened is that Karen has resigned from the select board. And that we're concerned about what the process of replacing her might look like as members of this community who are passionate about the status of the community in general. And that we hope with that resignation, that the, the work that's been done on racial justice in general doesn't come to a stall or a stop. And then we list some of the initiatives that Karen in particular, um, had begun. And then we state that we hope that Bill and Tyler choose a member of the community who is BIPOC or LGBTQ plus, um, and/or I guess. Um, and who is a, an ally to the cause, I guess, the cause that, um, we've been, we've been fighting for in our activism. So that they are, so that we see less of those gaffes, like what we saw at the select board listening session where somebody says, well, I, I just don't know. I've never done this before. I have no experience with this. Because obviously representation in government is important and it's something that we've never really seen in Peterborough, uh, at all. And so we state that Peterborough is uniquely suited to, as we say, walk the walk uh, in tackling the effects of racism. Uh, and we request continued transparency in the select board selection process. Hmm, I think that's it.
Yeah. No, I mean, I, I think that's, that's a solid breakdown of what's in there. And, um, I mean, I think that the main thing is, I mean, look, like, there's a certain amount of like, we can't sit here and demand that somebody of, you know, like BIPOC or LGBTQ, like that's to demand somebody get in could be a little bit tough in the sense that like that somebody has to actually want to do the work. Like we can't be forcing somebody in against their will to like run. But the idea is that even if that's not available, make sure to consider somebody that's at the very least versed in or, or even sensitive to these issues, like empathetic to these issues, like, you know, um, to, in a lot of ways, it seems like replacing kinds, the type of representative for the community that Karen was trying to be. You know what I mean? Or the, that she was doing, but hit a roadblock with.
Yeah. And, and to, um, kind of take it a step further than Karen or, you know, or at least keep in mind like, this is, this is the work that's begun and you've built this trust or expectation of the community. And don't waste this opportunity on just, you know, appointing another white guy, um, who you know, just falls in step with, um, the mundane things that have to get done in Peterborough, but also the, you know, there's a lot of change that's happening and, and the shape of Peterborough is changing and, and, um, I, I really feel it. Like I've lived here for almost, you know, 30 something years and I really like the town feels different. It has a different air about it right now.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Like, I don't know. Um, I don't know, like, I had, Anna and Jonah, what's your perspective on that? You know, like being on, like on the younger end of the community, which is like probably the one of, if not the most marginalized groups of people in this area. Like, um, I'm just like, you know, I'm, how has it shifted in like, like in your eyes? Like what's going on here in this town? Like what's like, eh, cause I think Zach brought something up right there, just like the climate of it. And we're certainly going to get into the, what's going on this weekend in a minute. But like seriously, just that overall move, like what's up with that?
Yeah, I, I think, um, that the, oh, sorry, Anna, you should go. I got, I gotta deal with.
Yeah.
I think in general, it will be embarrassing for Peterborough if at the end of this search, we still have, if we, if we end up with three white men on the board, like on the select board, I think it'll be sad. Because Peterborough is not, that is not what that town is. When you walk around Peterborough, there are so many different amazing types of people that you see walking around and it is a failure of the town that they don't engage those people in local government. That those people don't want to be on the select board. Because often the complaint is that the government is so white and so old. Because nobody runs for select board except those people. And so there is simply no option but to have a, a board that is that lacking in diversity. But it's because the select board is an underpaid position, in my opinion.
Uh, isn't it like unpaid?
Who are of marginalized groups from being able to be on the select board. Because if you are poor and you don't have a real, like a, a functioning salary, you don't have the time to put into the select board otherwise. And it's not an engaging position. They're not transparent about what goes on there. And so people from the community who are otherwise engaged in like living in Peterborough don't want to run because they don't know what that position is and it seems boring and lame. That's my opinion.
I, I definitely agree with everything you just said. I would, I would say one of my biggest worries about this is that if we did appoint another white person, that it would embolden those people that are having these rallies every Saturday and it would just create a, and even further divide, not that Bill or Tyler would want that, but I think it would, it would just further the divide between those people who have had those rallies and our activism. And it would just create so much more unnecessary tension that could be resolved if we had somebody who was versed in these issues and was able to facilitate these meetings in a, uh, very, you know, like a, a good way that, uh, hasn't been done yet. And if they do this, they can really help the town, um, just like grow and growth like better than it could have and create, uh, progress instead of just adding to the tension that we find ourselves in.
Yeah, definitely. Well, and like, I always wonder too, you know, like how much the, just the pure belief, like, oh, I'm not qualified to do that job. You know what I mean? Like, how, how much do you guys think that aspect of it like plays into it? Like I always, I don't know, for my own part, for the longest time, I always looked at like, oh, somebody who runs for the select board is like, they have to be this person who knows about how everything works. And like, you have to have a certain type of profession if you want to, you know, parlay it into a political, you know, political work. Um, but I, I don't know how true that is. I don't know, thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I mean, just looking at the people we have in our select board now, and they're kind of just that those regular people, I guess would be the term, like they're not people that have like, you know, Ivy League education or know or under, and I almost guarantee they don't know or understand everything about how the town government works. And it's, uh, it's just, I mean, I definitely agree that that's plays into working class people not wanting to run for office. I think that there's this weird perception of like the select board or like an, an elected office that you do need all of that stuff to run and you do need to know everything about the job before you get into it. But I think a lot of what the select board in this town is at least, is kind of learning on the job and getting acclimated to the position once you're in it. And this, this has happened with every select board member that we've elected, at least that I can remember. And, um, it's just about adjusting and getting someone to stand up and be like, okay, I'll do it. I mean, I don't really know a whole lot about it maybe, but I'll, I'll get into it and, uh, just see what I can do to help and, and adjust to the role afterwards.
Definitely.
I mean, in full transparency, I, you know, I've, I've thought about joining the select board, but, um, given that I'm a white male, I don't, you know, even though like a, I'm very passionate about what we're doing right now and Peterborough, I'm very passionate about Peterborough. It's, um, I just don't think it's the time or space for me. And like, and I think to Anna's point too, that sort of barrier to entry where it's like, it's not a, it's not really a paid position. A lot of them consider themselves volunteers, even though it is, you know, it's an elected position, but you essentially are, I mean, you're not a paid employee. And to find the time to do that, um, during a pandemic right now, sure, maybe there's, you know, I, I certainly have a lot of time, but, um, that could change at any moment. And, um, the amount of work that like I would imagine going into that job or that I like would want to put into that job, like, seems more and more not really possible while also maintaining another job, which like definitely sort of humanizes like Karen's experience, but like, that's something that I think like, like anyone just has to mentally prepare for and like find a way to work with. Um, or it just, we need to start to think about like, do we have the ability to start restructuring Peterborough's, uh, government? Do we have the ability to start considering like, do we elect a mayor? Do we like, you know, I like, I don't, I don't know logistics of that, obviously, but, um, like, you know, can we, do we have that power to do that? Like if we're more or less self-governed, you know?
No, I, I said this as a, as a, I say this mostly as a joke sometimes among friends that Peterborough is a bit of a failed state, if you think about it from a political science standpoint, because nobody runs for office. It's constantly just the same people running for office and the people that are in office can't do their jobs because they don't have enough resources to do their jobs. And so the people who are in office are, are leaving office. And honestly, if all of the people who are in office left office, who would replace them? Nobody, because nobody can afford to. And if Bill and Tyler resigned, there would be no select board.
I mean, it sounds like we're making an argument here.
Government, which is literally the definition of a failed state.
It sounds like the argument here is to pay the select board.
And, and to me, the only solution in reality to many of the problems in Peterborough is to restructure the way the government in the, in this town works. There needs to be pay. Because I like New Hampshire government. I like the way that it, I think, I like that anybody can be anything in New Hampshire government. I like that a lot of our state representatives don't have poli sci degrees, that they just are working class people. I think that's amazing. But the volunteer government system, it doesn't work. Um, for so many reasons. I know it's a, a controversial opinion in general, but Peterborough is a great example of it. Well, for all the reasons I just listed.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think the point is that it doesn't, that it's, it's great in theory, but it's not necessarily like it, it doesn't necessarily work out the way you want it to in practice because uh, how like, because time is finite, right? Like time and labor and resources are all essentially finite and, you know, what you're talking about is like an exponential growth in labor without an increase in time. Like if somebody has to sink X amount of hours into doing select board work and they still have to sink another 40 into a full-time job just to make ends meet. How many hours a week do you have after that for your family? And, you know, like so on and so forth. So it's like, and I'm, I mean, Beyonce offering that we pay selectmen. What kind of reforms to just like to the town would be worth looking at in your opinion?
I mean, we could kind of model it after like the, the state's government, which is like, you have an executive council and they like work with the governor and they, you know, report back to the governor and they, you know, represent their districts and, um, so, you know, I could see the select board remaining, but working more as an executive council and we have someone to report to that we elect. You know, and, and, and I think that gets people more civically engaged too. If, if people get more passionate about what leadership looks like, which is very important. You know, and, and like, because like a lot of the communication I would get with the select board is like, well, we don't know, you have to bring it to us. And it's like, like you have to bring the issues to us. And it's like, we need someone dedicated that's staying on top of the issues, that's looking out for it, that's looking out for our best interest. And it's not like, I mean, yes, we can definitely be good neighbors and a strong community and talk to each other. Um, and we should be doing that anyway. But, um, we need someone who, who actually is like committed to seeing the shape of, of Peterborough and not this body that meets once a month and can't communicate outside of that meeting.
That's insane. That's insane. I mean, it's designed to be inefficient. I mean, there could, there's any number of town government structures that Peterborough could implement based on other towns. I mean, it sounds ridiculous for such a small town, but there could be a larger, uh, like city council model where there are representatives from like different parts of town. Um, you know, like a, like a state representative.
Yeah, it's not unlike what's.
Parts of towns. And then we have a, a mayor who's in charge of like the entire town. Um, because people would be more invested in a representative who represents a smaller body of people. And then they have to do theoretically less work because they only represent a smaller portion of the town.
Definitely. Jonah, any, any ideas?
Yeah, no, I, I agree with the, I was just not expecting to talk about potentially new town governments for Peterborough. I'm loving this stuff. I think the city council is the, 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 the way to go. I think, um, like if you had what essentially the select board is and then a point man, like a, a mayor sort of person who maybe was paid, I think we would have a lot. Like the, the work would be spread out. And I think that having that leader working. Working with the select board would make it a lot more efficient and just like Anna said, the system is designed to be inefficient. They can't speak out of one. Month meetings and they can't uh correspond with us in a transparent or super transparent way and. It's just about using like all of the energy we have towards creating a new town government right now. And channeling that into actually restructuring our town government in the ways that we have the power to do. So I think that um people in town are waiting for a more efficient government, spe- especially in Peterborough. Everyone recognizes here and it was said in the listening session that we find ourselves as a leader of the region. And that we are a a hub for uh the Menandark region and and people come through our town and we are, we are this hub for the region. And if we don't use our government and or make our government more efficient. And have like a responsive and thoughtful government that actually works to. Change and progress this this hub for for the state or for the region, I think we're gonna find ourselves in a really tough spot in the next couple of years. And I think that I I can't remember exactly who their who their name was, but I I remember. Watching one of your videos where there was an economist saying that Peterborough is like uh on the brink of something that. Something either quite terrible or or quite good depending on how we react to it and I think um. Struck restructuring government is almost the only way that we can have an adequate reaction to that without. Taking over the state government and restructuring.
Well, and to bring it back to the letter just for a second, their response to us outlined. Their just initial response outlined to us how we can, basically how we can expect to receive our response. Uh which is already just to begin with inefficient um and it basically told us that. Layers of response, all of the select, let me know if I get any step of this wrong. But that the select people send notes to the town manager. Is that, and then the town manager like accumulates different like people's notes. Into a cohesive response, sends it back to them to be approved and then it goes out to us.
Yeah, it's sort of this game of ping pong where um I thi- I think each select member has to formulate their response. They go through the town administrator, the.
Town administrator, that's the word.
Yeah, and then they um. Kick it back to us and like and and in that email, you know, Carter's gonna bring up is that um. They they had said that this is the most efficient way for them. And this avoids having to do it in a meeting, which I I felt like, why would we, why would we be searching to avoid that? Like, that's actually.
Yeah, and we're going to have a meeting anyway, I think.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so there is, and I can, I mean, this is quick, you just read this, yeah, so all town matters shall be addressed to the select board email address. Upon review, each board member sh- will share comments or directives with the town administrator. Town administrator will compile a response for each board member to review. With the select board approval, said response will be forwarded back to you. Same process shall take place for all replies. And then this last bit was sort of like the real like hanger point for me that when I read it, I was like, oh, that's interesting. Um and text messages individually, email, phone discussion or social media quote comments. Shall be considered a non-binding opinion of a select board member and not to be considered the official board response. So definitely some some uh some ass covering there, which makes sense. Um, you know, I I would, I would expect nothing less uh, you know, I think it's. I mean, I understand it in a sense, cuz it's bureaucracy and like what were we expecting? You know what I mean? Like, of course, that was how it was gonna go. Um, but it does, you know. I think like it's, it's interesting to me because it it does still feel somewhat black boxy. You know what I mean? Like, and I, I mean, I would imagine that. Bill and Tyler are probably just like not gonna comment on Facebook until this is sorted out. Like, I would imagine they'll probably just stay away from it. Um, but, you know, I, it's like. I don't know, my feeling on it is definitely more. I don't know. Like, given that Sununu's emails thing, like, did y'all see that? Did y'all see what happened with that?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, how how he was um, he's deleting emails after thirty days. And it's like. You know, I'm just, I'm kinda at this point where I'm like, can y'all just take every email? Like, you decided to be a public official. Just like anytime that you're in contact with anybody about any like, you know, anything like, just you, like, public. Like, like right to know everything, you know what I mean? I wish that there was more expansive. Reach to right to know, like I I because I don't, I personally never feel comfortable with. Private discussion like that, like e- even even when I'm doing it with, you know. With people that I agree with, there's still like a a certain amount of concern there, like I had to make an, you know. I had to make this point with a bunch of people recently where I was like, you know, we're in some group DM somewhere and I'm like, this is still a smoky back room. Like, we're doing the same thing right now, kind of, whether, you know, like. This moment here, live online, a little bit different because we're literally showing everybody exactly what we're talking about right now. But if it's a private call and it's not recorded and it's not uploaded or there's no record of it, then that. You know, I'm not saying that it is necessarily a smoky back room, but you i- it opens you up to the. Like the attack in a way, you is, you guys know what I mean? Like, I could totally see a conservative person just flying out being, you know, at like if. If it was a liberal select board, right? Like, not even, like, forget progressive, like liberal select board. I could still see a conservative flying out and being like, you guys are conspiring in private messages away and then, you know. Keeping that se- separate and I just like, that's why I always get a little weird about like. Saying like, okay, all of this communication is just not valid on its face. Like, I know that it's, it's again, it's ass covering, but. It's, it's a bummer, I guess. It's, it's a bummer because we, it. It keeps us from being able to see what the thought process between here and. When they have their next select board meeting is, you know, we don't know what's going on.
Which is extremely important for a town like Peterborough where we have sixty-five hundred people and it's not like we need. We we don't at all need smoky back rooms. We don't really at all need these private conversations when it comes to these super important. Uh events happening in our town, like choosing a new select board person and like, if if they were going to. Now, I don't need to say that, but yeah, it's very disappointing.
It do- it doesn't create trust. I mean, transparency creates trust and um. I will say to to Karen's credit that she would email from her, you know, from her personal email and she would have human responses to things. Um and I think when you said, what do you expect? Like, I expect human responses and I expected that from Chief Gennard. I've I've expected that from the select board. Um, you know, and if the like, select board. Feels powerless, like they can give themselves, like, I'm not suggesting that that they uh, you know, assert any kind of power, but like. There is power in just communicating like a human being with other human beings um. Like, just to to give the runaround and and the waiting process, like, it's just like we're. Constantly waiting and waiting and waiting um, like. You know, how do we get anything done? And like, what are, what are they doing when they're, you know, in the uh like interim? I just.
Zach, I think you've been begging for it since the beginning when we were first talking about meeting with Chief Gennard and things like that. It's just. Instead of a a measured, hyper-political response is to just talk to people on even ground. We all live in the same town, we're all neighbors, we're all peers. Can we please just talk to each other about these issues? Like, we're like we're neighbors, like we're peers. And again and again, they put up these walls that are confusing, that make us feel alienated. That we're not sure what exactly they mean or why they're there. Um, they say R RSA, RSA, RSA. I I can't read this RSA, I don't know what it means. Um, and it's just hard, it makes it all hard.
Well, I, that, so here, tell you what. With that point, I will, I, what I I will do really quick is, because this, they do cite. To, they do cite an RSA, of course, cuz that's what we do, is we cite RSAs and then make sure everything gets really. Uh opaque and not just just unwieldy, like, I I don't know, I find. I find this to be a type of um repression, like, it's like. Like, like using just like the unwieldy mass of the law to just overwhelm folks into being like. It's just too, you know. The language is too blocky to even understand, like, why bother? Let a lawyer do it, right? But it's always worth it to take the time to actually. Um, get into, like, how how to read the friggin RSA? Because like, come on, man, it's like, I this is again, it's, you know, I just, I don't like the. The obstacle that it creates, you know what I mean? Um.
I want a T-shirt that says I was born in the friggin RSA. And I, I I think. Every granite sater gets one.
Yeah, I mean, there are people who accuse the left of being overly academic when we use terms like petit bourgeois. And people on Twitter don't know what it means and it's impossible to access left leftist discourse. And then just to talk at a Peterborough town meeting, you have to be able to read these insane RSAs. I can't even imagine the amount of people that it prevents from being able to access just normal. Normal political discussions in their own towns.
What's more frightening is how many people think they understand it and just like barrel into it without knowing jack and like. You know, just, yeah, so at any rate, this right here is. The exact RSA that is going to, oh, is this the right one or is this? Um, yes, this is indeed it. Okay, so basically. What this says is that the remaining selectmen um will appoint. A new select person now. Uh, the next bit is, whenever the selectman failed to make such appointment, the superior court or any justice thereof. On petition of any citizen of the town and after such notice as the court shall deem reasonable, may appoint a suitable person to fill the vacancy. Provided however, that if the town has adopted the provisions of RSA six, six, nine, six, one, part four. And a petition thereunder is submitted before the submission of a petition under this section, the provisions of RSA six, six, nine, six, one, four shall apply. So that sucks, like, that, just that language totally uh totally sucks. And it's basically the, that entire block of crap that makes the, you know, like. Really i- is just a word salad, really only applies to if the selectmen decide to not. Like, do anything, like if they sit on their hands, like if Bill and Tyler, for whatever reason, sit on their hands and don't do anything about this. What this is basically saying is that. Citizens of the town can petition a judge to make a decision. Like, after, you know, like, obviously, the court has to see that enough time has passed that it makes sense to do so, like giving the selectman. And act like actually enough time to make a decision. So that gets, that's sort of like. The murky area where it's like, well, what is the right amount of time? So that's probably where debates about this would get into. Um, but at any rate, once the court has deemed X amount of time has passed and the selectman didn't do this. As long as they get a petition, then the court can. Appoint somebody to fill that vacancy um. Unless the town adopts six, six, nine, six, one, part four. Which basically, I think it it allows the process to go. Like, I'm not gonna pull that one up right now, but what it does is it allows the process to go into a public voting thing. Or it's like, it's i- i- like it triggers a special election, essentially. Um, so we just have a new election. But again, all of this is only possible, like all of this other crap is only possible. If Bill and Tyler don't do what they are required by this particular section to do. And what they are saying they're going to follow. So, like, it's. It's procedural stuff, but this is a good example of how like, like, how many folks in town are gonna take the time to read that? You know, like, I'm glad that we're doing it here and now. Like, I hope, I hope people watch this so that they like can can understand what that means. Um, cuz it's really like, I mean, I don't know. When I first saw that, I don't know about you guys, but like I have to, like, I had to read that like three or four times before I knew what it said.
Well, it wouldn't be the worst scenario if we had to go to a special election, like, because I almost like. Outside of the the three of us that had drafted that letter, like, I'm not so certain that they're getting a lot of. Requests that they be mindful of who they select, like, I don't. I don't really know that there's any kind of like pressure campaign that like you guys really need to like think through this. And I, you know, I hope that they understand that and I'm sure that they they do, they're reasonable enough people um, but. Should they botch it and we, you know, and there's, or they they'd sit on it for a while, like. And I, you know, I I can't, it's, what is it like? They have like forty-five days or something or um.
I don't know, did they specify it? I ca- I can't remember if they specified in that.
I feel like there was, there was a number attached to it, but. I don't know, but I also, another thing that we we did offer in that letter is that, you know, we would reach out to our. Networks and communities to see like, like if they, if they feel like they're coming up short finding someone that meets our expectations. Like that we would assist them in that process and that we would hope that they would trust us in that process um. Which right then and there would, would already be an interesting step in tor- in a new like community-led uh form of governing. Um, which I, you know, could be incredible in its own right.
Yeah, definitely. Wow. I mean, I don't even, I don't even necessarily have a response to that, like, sometimes, man. So like, okay, guys, yeah, just just throwing it out there. So like, okay. The pro police rally.
The pro police rally.
General impressions, we hoping the thunderstorm just ruins it all.
It seems like uh, they say it's a pro America, pro police rally, but. The timing of these rallies is the most interesting thing. It's after we had our our rally for, I think, I don't know the exact title for it. But Zach's March Rally and then I had heard rumors that people were planning a right-wing sort of response to that. Um, and just the fact of the matter is, is they are. Trying to galvanize a potential base in this town to try and counteract the momentum that we have had. From our own success in organizing and our own success in activism. And I think you see this with the way that they were speaking last time. They aren't even really focused on any main issues and I wouldn't really necessarily say that they have a mission other than. Stop the anti-police sentiment in town and and and, you know, crush voices like Zach, Anna and I. From speaking up and trying to make our government more efficient and work for working people and and. Be a transparent, open and thoughtful process. Because these people are the affluent members of our community who have thrived off of the inefficiency in our government. And have continued to build their family names and build their businesses off of this inefficiency. And exploiting working people in this town who don't have a voice and who have never had a voice because we live in a town run by rich people. And um it'll be interesting to see where it goes uh, but, you know, the the lack of organization or the lack of. Mission in their uh efforts seems to be just proving the point that it is a reactionary. Response to us and um, you know, I'm proud to have brought out the right wingers, but um. At the end of the day, I think that you gotta be more organized, but.
Yeah, I mean, our, our YU Rural Youth Union, which like is the organization that Jonah and I have been organizing our events in Peterborough through for a little while now. Like, we've been occupying the police lawn every Saturday for over a month now. Um, and if, it's no coincidence at all that their last rally and that this rally as well is the exact day of the week and almost the exact time that we hold our event on the police lawn and there are events at the police station. It's in the same place, it's at the same time, it's the same day of the week. Our event is a defund the police event, their event is a pro-police event. Their event is just like Jonah said, it's reactionary, it's nationalist, it's patriotic. It's, their event is advertised as a positive, no negativity space to celebrate America. And as they were walking out last time, they like yelled at and booed us and called us, they said, what a sad crowd, you guys are so negative, as if pointing out racism in America is like a downer, I guess. Which it should be, it should be a downer, but I'm sorry if it rains on their parade.
I love, I love it. I love the literal.
And the like, you know, one of the co-organizers, uh, Jim Graham has been you know, he's the first to put it in the Peterborough, New Hampshire, not the official Peterborough, New Hampshire Facebook group, but the um unofficial circus that, that everybody loves to have their input in, uh, including myself. You know, he is aggressively anti-black lives matter, touting it as though there's, there's like this very bizarre cognitive dissonance that we've all heard, that it's like, I'm anti-black lives matter, but I'm pro-black. And it's like, what did you just say? Like, like, do you not understand that like, like the mission of black lives matter is for black lives? It is for the dignity and liberation of black people. Like, so, and then that, you know, I, I do wanna tie that into the, to the signs being stolen in town eventually when we get there. But the actual cognitive dissonance is just amazing and then like, I don't, you know, I, I stuck around and Jonah and Greg Carter, who's the other organizer of this, um, went kind of pound for pound and like Greg was just like making so many assumptions about Jonah.
I was hoping to talk about this on the channel, man. I was really hoping.
Think we should go there if Jo- if Jonah, you wanna go there, um, cuz it was, it was so like emblematic of what this really is.
Yeah, I mean, it's uh, you know, at the end of the day, like, I don't need to go into any specifics, he said, but like what he was trying to do was not have like a, a humanized conversation, like a person-to-person. Like, I went to that and I was like, let's have a conversation. I, I wanna see where you're coming from, wanna know what you're uh, planning here and just right off the bat, he, he, he was like in presidential debate mode. He thought he was running for something and I was also running for something and we were gonna debate policy together. And I was like, no, I'm just trying to get your personal feelings on what's going on. I don't, I don't need to hear what Candace Owen thinks. I don't need to hear what Charlie Kirk thinks. I need to hear what you think. I need to hear what your, your thoughts and opinions are. And I, I continue to hammer my points and bring up my own personal feelings about it. And he continued to try to call me a Marxist and associate me with organizations that I'm not a part of and, and try to insinuate that I'm anti-American or want to burn the police department down and take, take down everything in some sort of anarchist manner. And, you know, just how hard it was for him to do that kinda shows the ineffectiveness of that argument because um it was hard for him to do that. And I think he did end up running away because he couldn't continue to, he just realized he couldn't go me into a reactionary response and get me all angry and call him a racist or something like that and as soon as he realized he couldn't do that, he ran away, or, you know, I won't characterize it as running away, but he left and um, you know, it's it's a interest, I don't know, it's, it's hard to talk about without getting too rude towards a, a person that I don't know much about, but you know.
Well, I mean, look, like, it's, it's always okay, in my opinion, to do a little Duncan when Duncan is necessary, you know, like, it's not, it's, we, we gotta have fun with it a little bit, you know what I mean?
I mean, I'm gonna be real, his mom pulled up in her Range Rover to, to come say, hey, like, the, the crowd has moved on, like, that happened, I, you know, like, I take that as you will, but that happened. And like, here's a young man who's like dressed in a suit. You know, who is like this bearded New Hampshire kinda looking guy who cleaned up for this event, slicked his hair back, put on the tie, um, and
Had a speech ready.
Oh, yeah.
Had a speech ready. And then like, you can see like just the body language when Jonah and him were talking, like you know, you started to see him get kinda small and get kind of like like feeling sort of deflated because like, I have to have this real conversation with a real person who like I have assumed so much about that I know nothing about, like, and like you could just kinda see behind his eyes and in his voice, it was like starting to fall apart for him.
And then every, every time he tried to try something new, you could just see the walls breaking down, he'd be like, ooh, ooh. And then the crowd got bigger and bigger and you could just see him go back into his shell just from like uh, his inability to get me in, like just, his assumptions weren't right. And I think that if you just break their assumptions, then it's hard for them to continue forward from that. Their whole arguments are based off of assumptions they've read on the internet or seen on a video from Ben Shapiro or something like that. I don't really think that uh, many of these people necessarily have their own opinions. And I think that a lot of it is just spewing propaganda. And I've heard al- almost every argument he's made, black people have a terrible culture, you know, all of these different things. It's just uh, propaganda written by these people and he didn't understand the intersectionality of these issues. I forget exactly what it was, but I was like, no, 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 drug crime is tied into racism. Like, you're, you're, you're trying to separate these two, two issues that are playing together and creating this system of injustice. And he just refused to understand any of that. And as soon as he sort, as soon as he realized like the contradictions in what he was saying, he would just move to a different topic. He'd be like, oh shit. Oh, uh, but you're a black lives matter Marxist, you wants to destroy this country, right? And like, hmm, no, let's bring it back to this.
Well, you know.
Well, I think, I think he was talking about hip-hop. He said, you like hip-hop, right? And uh, and he's like, what, you know, oh, and you know, you were like, no, I mean, not really, like, and um, he's like, well, well, I used to listen to hip-hop and, you know, a lot, a lot of the, the songs are about crack, about drugs and slinging drugs. And then, yeah, it just devolved from there and it was like.
And like, where's the historicizing the, that content, right? Like, where's the historicizing the fact that Wu-Tang's Enter the Thirty-Six Chambers came out of like one of the most violent oppressive parts of New York City? Like, where's the reality that like, that's what they had to do to get by and like, they were able to turn it into like, what ended up being a pretty beautiful end product. I mean, like, look, Cream is a fire song. You know, like, that's just, that's, that's the way it is. And that exposed how many like young white kids to be able to understand what actual like struggle in the inner city was like. You, you know what I'm like, that's fucking nonsense to me, I'm sorry. And then like, d- uh, sorry, I'm like, I'm definitely popping off now, but but the, the thing that kills me right about the, the Marxist attack, like I love it when they call us Marxists. Because my thing is like, dude, that's like Santa McKinseyan, right? Like, you know, like that's, that's you're, you're saying that I, like, okay, I subscribe to a, like, like I happen to think this one guy's critique of economics and framing makes sense. Like, that's, that's what qualifies somebody as a Marxist, right? Like, you just, like, because that's generally what Marx did was critique economics. Like, that's, that's what capital is. You know, the closest time you get to anything different is the manifesto. But even then, it's not necessarily like devoid of a class labor struggle. Like, it's, it's all rooted in this like economic context. And communism and socialism are attempts to solve the problem that Marxism basically puts forth, right? Like, it's like, okay, if I subscribe to Marx, I subscribe to a school of thought about a problem. And then if I subscribe to communism or socialism, I subscribe to this particular approach to solving this problem. Like, they're not even, like, it, it shows like a lack of basic understanding of what the terms even mean. So the second someone starts accusing you of being a Marxist, it's like the immediate response, in my opinion, is like, tell me what you mean by that. Like, what do you mean by Marxist? Define Marxist and let's go from there. Like, because like, you know what? I'll cop to it. Yeah, I am a Marxist cuz I, I, I tend to agree with the critique that Marx put forward in his writings. I think it, it's very relevant to the way things ended up panning out. I think there's problems with some of it. I think there's other thinkers that came along later and kind of fixed the problems that he like didn't get to. It's also worth remembering that like, the guy did not live in our times, so had no concept of like the internet or I, you know, like, this is, it's, it's also devoid of um, historical connection, right? So like Jonah, in your example, he's like, he'll bring something up and then he starts attacking like the idea and the moment you point to, well, hey, you cannot decouple this historical incident from the narrative in which it exists. You know what I mean? Like, it's, like, there, there is a direct line between, you know, eighteen sixty-seven and today. It's not like, it's, it's not like that was a separate timeline that we got to like put in a compartment and set away. You know, like, it's always been a continuum from year to year of the problem just folding over. And so when someone tries to like hit, use something in a historical context only and not act like it's a part of why, like, it's an active living part of why we're at where we're at. Really just, it's, if you're not thinking about that, that way, it's really easy to intervene in a debate setting and kind of shut down that type of argument by pointing out that deficit of attention on the issue, you know what I mean? And I think that's probably why he would end up sort of backing away from the conversation that you were having with him. Now, I mean, again, I wasn't there, so I'm sitting here analyzing like crazy about you know, some shit I didn't even witness, but generally speaking, that I, I would imagine that that's part of why it started to fall apart.
No, yeah, I definitely agree with everything he just said right there. I think that, that sums up perfectly why he started to fall apart and why he had to leave just couldn't have said it better almost.
Well, and like, I think, you know, the way you did that is good and it's worth us discussing, like especially if, you know, if we're gonna think about this, like it's a mini little like strategy session. You know, like, like temporarily speaking, it's a strategy session ahead of this weekend's protest, you know what I mean? Like, this is for anybody out there that's like, you know, if you're anticipating that you're gonna have to get into a debate with somebody, consider this dynamic that like, in many debates with conservatives especially, I mean, like, dude, you can go look at the Peterborough Town Group right now. And there's like seven of these arguments right at the top of the page that, like, you can see it happening in real time. And um, that's generally my advice is like go for it, avoid ad hominem attacks at all costs. Um, but also when someone's being a total idiot, it is okay to say, hey dude, you're being a total idiot. You know, it's, it's, that's, that's okay. It's, you know, and, and, and I think like we also need to be able to laugh about it, you know what I mean? Like, I'm, I'm a big proponent of finding funny ways to um uh, protest and intervene. It's uh, that's always a, a good thing, so.
Yeah, don't be so serious about it. Like when you're talking to Greg Carter, you gotta think of a little bit of humor in that and just kinda cuz it is humorous. I mean, when this, when this person is like, well, have you watched this thirteen-minute Candace Owen video? It's like, what? Did you just say it?
Yeah, like, don't, you know, don't be afraid to like make a silly like pop culture reference or something when you're tearing somebody down. Like, make it funny, make it fun, make it a good time. That's like, leftists aren't funny enough, man, I tell you, like.
Well, and when you're dealing with someone who's talk, like preaching family values, that doesn't have a family, I don't have a, I don't have kids, like, let's not and like, let's, let's talk to each other, like, we're twenty and thirty-somethings, like, let's you know, or whatever, whatever age you are, like, be age-appropriate, like be goofy, you know? Uh, as my friend says, goof responsibly, you know?
Yeah, totally. So, okay, um, let's, let's do this last one quick, like, they stole the signs, y'all. They stole the BLM signs. I don't know who they is.
Somebody give like an overview, just, I, I mean, I, just like of what
Yeah, totally.
Happened. I mean, I think I have a pretty good understanding.
So, here, what I'll, what I'll do is I will get the um, I'll just throw the actual article up and we can like read over it together. It's actually
I can also give um some more like anecdotal, cuz I, I had my sign stolen.
Yeah, you were, I was gonna say, that's, you know, we're actually sitting here with somebody who experienced this and then I think like, so um, just like, I'll do the, sort of the top of the article because it just, just, it, it expands later on and we have Zach here, so he gets quoted. We don't have to get into that too, too much cuz he can speak for himself. But um, yeah, so this is an article, article from Ben, Black Lives Matter signs disappeared from residences all around Peterborough Tuesday night. State Representative Ivy Van said she was quote, de- deeply disappointed to awake Wednesday morning and find she was one of at least six households whose signs had gone missing in what appears to be a targeted sweep from Summer Street to High Street to Union Street. Um, my understanding that this is actually much more expansive and that it hit Old Street Road as well. Quote, "I'm disappointed because I hate to feel that this is a place where a sign that supports other people would be taken." Van said, "I think it's a shame that someone felt like that sign was an attack and therefore should be taken away or whatever they thought." Van said she had two Black Lives Matter signs in a quote thicket of political signs supporting candidates in the upcoming primary. The political signs were left alone while it appeared that the BLM signs were removed and thrown into a nearby swamp. Uh, Van said that she has had political signs go missing in previous election years, but a sign in support of black lives is hardly political to Zach's earlier point. And um, you know, Zach, I, it, it gets to a quote from you next, so I'd rather just let you talk on it.
Yeah, um, so you know, I woke up to the same news that Ivy had. I had a friend of mine text me, um, are your signs missing? Is your Black Lives Matter sign missing? Um, I hadn't gone outside yet and sure enough, it was gone by the time I, you know, stepped out the front door. Um, and so, yeah, I live on Summer Street, uh, towards the end, heading towards Hancock. And I, every, you know, one who wants to come uh, steal more signs from me. And uh, and Ivy lives closer to town um, on, on Summer Street. And then my friend who had their sign stolen on uh, High Street. So like, in that little radius, but then I was hearing, you know, reports from people from West Peterborough, people um, on Ames Court, which is, you know, off of uh, of uh, one-on-one. Um, so you know, and it was like, for like half a second, I was upset about the sign. But for me, it's all about the, the hate behind the sign. Like, that is like, you are, you are absolutely and, and, and by virtue of not taking any political signs, um, leaving all the Trump and support the police signs that have populated my street recently. Like, you know, it's, it's just so evident that they're like, BLM is targeted and it is, it goes back to not understanding that Black Lives Matter organization and black lives, like, it's the same. It's not like, I've, I've been putting it in the context of like calling absentee, you know, ballots like, different than mail-in ballots. Like, it's the same, like, it's the same process. I mean, yes, you can drop off an absentee ballot and not mail it in, but it's all like, you, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's not, um, there's not this difference that sorry, my dog is chewing, chewing my guitar stand. It's up real life.
It's all good, dude.
We're alive right now.
Always live.
Always live, always real things happening. Um, so, um, anyway. anyway, yeah, I'm just like, it's just beyond at this point and, and like, I have no inkling to who it is. I have no, um, desire to find out necessarily who it is. I have no desire to punish that person. Um, a lot of people were saying, well, report it, make sure you report it to the police. And I'm like, well, I'm for abolition, so I'm not gonna involve the police in this situation and I'm not gonna expect the police to solve a problem when we're trying to solve policing. Like that, you know, that's just the last resort for me. And then comes in the other part of this where people are talking about, well, someone went on your private property and, you know, stole your, your private property. And it's like, well, we live on stolen land to begin with. So like, that's awesome move for me.
Exactly.
All just boils down to it was an act of hate and an act of stupidity, like plain and simple and you, you got a reaction, everyone in the community is talking about it, got in the paper, like congratulations, you know? But, but what it's doing is it's ramping up and like, we're seeing things ramp up with more of these rallies and we're seeing things ramp up as we get closer to the election. And it, it's like, it's not, uh, there's, there's no room for coincidence anymore, you know? So.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good exercise in abolitionist thinking, Zach, is that the point is not to seek out the person who did it and punish them for doing something wrong, but to seek community accountability for the circumstances that led someone to seek out Black Lives Matter signs and steal them off people's lawns.
I mean, that's the real work right there, isn't it? Like that's, like, I always find that to be, I, I know that people get all upset about it sometimes, but it's like, that's like, it's, it's an interesting position because it really, it comes down to like, like for leftists, I would say this is the part where we have to put our money where our mouth is. And it's like, if we're gonna sit here and we're gonna say that we want police to go away, we can't be at the same time demanding police show up and get involved. Like that's just like it, that, that, like, that will turn us into the exact hypocrites that we're trying to, you know, get out of the whole system entirely. Um, and you know, like I, I oftentimes like, that's a personally for me, that, and I know this is a little, a little bit tangential, but like, that's like, that's kind of a, a foundation of like the, the mask argument that worries me sometimes. Where like, I'll see a lot of people, you know, clamoring for defunding the police while at the same time demanding an enforced mask mandate. And my question at that point is like, well, what does enforced mask mandate look like to you? You know what I mean? Like if you're sitting here saying that, do you, do you seriously want people to be pulled over for, you know, like, or stopped by a cop in a public space and given a fine? For this, like, what kind of penalty are we facing? Like, is there a threat of physical violence if you say no? Like, what's that? You know, that just, man, like, and look, I'm very pro mask mandate in the sense that like, I think if we had one, it would give businesses teeth. You know what I mean? Like, I'm not necessarily advocating for calling the police, right? But what I would essentially like is for a business to be able to call the police if they need to and have the police actually, you know, be able to intervene. Now, like, if the, in the sense that if this person is literally endangering other people, right? If you're physically endangering people, if like, if this asshole is in a bar and they're drunk and they're like, oh, I'm gonna cough on you and give you Corona, huh, huh, huh. Like, that's assault. You know what I mean? Like, that's kind of assault. And a way to be able to enforce that, you know, like, it's like, it's easier for a business owner or like a bar owner to be like, nope, get out or I'm calling the cops. If there's a mandate in place saying you gotta wear a mask, because how likely is that situation to occur in the first place? You know what I mean? Like, there's always these elements of like giving the, you know, and, and again, to me, it's still not even a perfect situation. Like ideally, everybody would just subscribe to the like, no shirt, no shoes, no service model and we wouldn't have fucking problem right now. Like, it's so aggravating. That's such a hard hump for folks to get over. And I don't
We need RSAs, baby.
Get them RSAs, all them RSAs. No, and that's like, and, and I, I think to that end, that's a really, really good reason why folks should like, like take the time to try and find a way to get comfortable reading that stuff or like, don't be too afraid to look it up and and dig into it or get in touch with a friend and be like, hey, I don't understand what the hell this means. Can you help me understand what this means? Like, you know, I I love to do like reading groups where we just read the law and have like a discussion about law instead of like, oh yeah, we're gonna read the new Ta-Nehisi Coates book. Or whatever, whatever it is, so, I, you know. Again, here I'm rambling, but the point is like, look, we, the town is like, this is, this is kind of like the example, like the, the rally and the sign stealing happening at the same time. To me is like the big red flag that's like, all right, what's up with the town? Like, why, why? Why did we not know that people felt this way sooner? Like, how did, how, you know, and in the interests of how can we strategize to actually deal with it? Not like, oh gosh, what, how could this have happened? Like, I don't wanna do some pearl clutch and like boomer shit. That's, sounds boring. Um, I'm, yeah.
I'm just, I'm not like coming for you by saying this or anything.
Please do.
I do think there was like, I do think there are a lot of people who knew that Peterborough was pretty racist.
Oh, yeah.
I do, but I don't think that they were empowered to do a lot of open, on the street racism. They just liked to like, I don't know, go to the high school and like say the N-word or on the street, maybe they like look at you weird or whatever. Like it was a lot of like super closeted stuff. Um, and, and I don't know, we've heard stories from a lot of community members about stuff that's like very aggressive.
Oh, yeah.
And I, I think that like it's all, all of that like built up nastiness that's been in Peterborough under the radar is just sort of coming to a head. And now white people are really, we're noticing it, we're noticing it because it's, it's very public.
And it's an election year.
Yeah, it really is. Ugh, dude.
There's a lot of Trump flags everywhere you drive, hanging from the trees.
Or like tucked up, my neighbor has one like tucked to his like front door, like twenty feet from the street and it's like, don't be a coward, like, come on, like.
Was that the guy with the mousetraps on the back of it? I saw some dude post a picture of his like Trump sign, which was right next to his, like his front door and he had a whole bunch of Victor traps stuck to the back of it in case somebody tries to come grab his sign.
I thought that was a meme, first of all, and I, I have no idea. I have attempted to take my neighbor's sign because like sign, you know, but like, by the same token, it's like, put it on the like closest to the street, like everybody does, like, what are you, like, you are, you're afraid, like, and I think it, I think it is like worth pointing out, the like theater of all of this is like the distance, like the, like, you, you've, you've sensed that like there is this like liberal, like torch mob coming toward you and then like, and to be fair, like the left senses, like, the right is doing that because they literally are, like, and we look at fucking Charlottesville, like, look at any, you know, uh, and it's like, I'm not gonna like hide my side, like, put it, just, I don't know, fucking play the game like everybody else, like.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, I mean, fear is the driver, right? Like fear is that, like that big motivator. And I think like it's, what's funny to me is it's just like, like, that's just, um, for these people, it's like, it's like baked in. It's like, well, yeah, of course I'm afraid of it, but it, it always, I don't know. It gets, I, I don't, you know, I don't wanna get too deep into like a property conversation, like private property and the problem with private property. Like that's like, there's, there's a whole, there's a whole subset of issues with that. And like, that's actually, I mean, what I think is funny is how like, how at the top of the discussion that is right now? And I love watching the conservatives argue with each other over it, like trying to out, don't like, like get, get off my lawn each other, you know what I mean? Like, it's like, oh yeah, well, I have a right to, you know, to put razor blades on my sign. It's like, oh yeah, well, you know, if, if my kid comes home with razor cuts on his hands, I'm gonna go to your house first and like, it's just like this whole like, oh God, it's, it's a mess, man. It's a total mess.
Yeah, and then, you know, and like people are like, well, you know, hang it from your tree or staple it to a tree or like, and it's like, and I said, I wrote the other day, like, the signs are baby steps. They're nothing more than that. They're, they're saying like, I, I can't be outside my house right now and have a conversation with you, so here's my lawn sign. You can like know where I stand and posture. And it, that like, you know, it, it, it is a sign of solidarity. It is like, it's a baby step though, you know, and it's like, um, you know, even just like before this call, like someone was like, well, where was all this outrage, you know, two years ago? And we were, you know, talking about that and like, it's just virtue signaling. And it's like, there is a degree of that. But also like, don't paint Peterborough in broad strokes, like a lot of us are doing a lot of work, like we're not just putting our, the signs in our yard. A lot of people are not just putting that sign there. There are a lot of people that are just doing that and I think that's unfortunate. And like, but that, that's the lane that, that they can do right now. That's what, you know, that's what they feel capable of and, and, you know, I hope they join us. But, um, I, I just think like the sign war is like that, you know, it's, it's just like so, I don't know.
It's such a New Hampshire ass problem. Like, it's such a New Hampshire ass problem, like road signs are like, like, it, I've, I've heard politicians refer to them as like, it's like, it's like as good as, as funding. Like, it's like, it's as useful to them as straight up dollars sometimes to just get more signs, like, I, so I don't know. I, I think, I mean, that's, I would say that that's a problem pursuant to the fact that we do private property, the way we do it. But, you know, the thing I think that, like a big takeaway from sort of your position, Zach, which I think is interesting, is like, and what we were just talking about, where like you've got, you know, you're like, you're out here saying, man, I don't even, I don't even need to know who took it. I don't, you know, like, I'm just bummed about the hate. Flip side, you've got Trump people that are like, I gotta put it way up in my tree so these kids can't come and steal it. And, um, and what I find so interesting about that is like, that's, that shows the fundamental difference between the way the two movements think about what they're doing. Because to us, the BLM sign is just one tiny little piece, one temporal little piece of a much larger movement, a much larger conversation that has to happen. Those signs are gonna get destroyed. It's gonna happen at some point or another. Like, it's not like this stuff isn't gonna stay with us. It's not gonna be with us forever. It's not the solution. It's, you know, it's, it's barely even a baby step, you know what I mean? Like it's, it's, it, it's, it's a sh, it's a sign of sad, you know, like literally, it's a sign of solidarity. And we understand that these won't be able to stay here, you know, like not all the time anyways. We're always gonna have to go out to, you know, when it snows and we've got banks, we're gonna have to go out, we're gonna have to dig the sign out, we're gonna have to stick it back in the snow, all this stuff, right? It's whatever, like, it could get hit by a plow, it could get wrecked, we have to go get another one. It's fine. On the flip side, your Trump voters are like freaking out, like their sign, it's, it's, it's like the sign is Trump. It's like the sign is like an extension of Trump, you know, and for them, I wonder if they think that we are, we view our signs the same way they view theirs. And that might, you know, like, like I wonder, you know, it's like, like for them, the, the act of having their sign stolen is a real like, that's a real violation, you know what I mean? That's like, like for tho, those people in their heads, it's like we're literally putting our hands on their bodies. You know, and for us, it's like, man, you're just heckling me. Like, this is like having somebody say I look like a jackass in my pants or something, you know, like, I, it, it's not like, they're not even on the same level. And it's, I think it's what type of conclusions anybody draws from that observation is, it's, you know, it's, it's up to anybody to do what they want with it, but I think it's, it's like, it's worth considering our relationship to that symbol, like the, like, like a sign as a symbol, you know?
To that end, I mean, I think it's also indicative of how much just more intense politics are in general, especially electoral politics. I mean, stealing the Black Lives Matter signs, flat out, that's like, it's racist. It's not okay. People shouldn't do that. It's, it's an obvious indicator of just ignorance. But I remember in two thousand and sixteen with Hillary, there weren't a lot of Hillary yard signs, but there were Trump yard, yard signs, Hillary yard signs, signs on the side of the road. I know plenty of kids at Conval, Democrats, Republicans, whatever, who would go out and joyride and they would grab Trump signs and then kids on the other side who would go and steal Hillary signs. And it was like a game. I don't know. It was just, I mean, kids took it in stride either way. Um, because both sides did it. It was like, oh, haha, I went out and I stole a bunch of Trump signs from downtown Peterborough. Isn't that so funny? And then kids would in equal measure go out and steal Hillary signs and you would be kind of mad about it. But it was also, you weren't that mad about it cuz you knew that your friends went out and did the same thing with Trump signs. So how mad could you really be about it in all honesty? But this election, it feels like people are very like genuinely, uh, like with their chest, they're very mad about it. They're like personally injured, personally hurt at the idea of someone stealing their, their Trump sign from their yard. It is like a personal injury upon them. Whereas in two thousand and sixteen, it was like, oh, those kids pranking us again. I'll have to go get another one, whatever. Um, it's like, it's a very different intensity.
Well, and, and with that, like, I'm just thinking about Kenosha, like, you know, you have this seventeen year old kid from Illinois who, you know, hops over to Wisconsin. Um, you know, Kenosha is right over the border. I've driven through it many times. Um, and, um, you know, rifles down, uh, kills two protesters and injures one of them. And, you know, and people immediately find out who this person is. They find out that he is, he is pro-police, he is, uh, a Trump supporter. And it's like, so it's, it's interesting to kind of see that parallel where it's like, we live in, you know, these small communities and like I, you know, I stole those signs in, in high school. I did it, you know, like, I suspect probably a teenager. I don't, but like, whatever, it's, it's like kind of moot. But I think what you're saying, Anna, is like, in this sort of like political heat right now, like, that's can so quickly turn into that seventeen year old with an assault rifle mowing down protesters. And it's like, you know, and I think Peterborough too, like is having this awakening that like, like there's so much tension going into Saturday because like, it, it so goes the nation, you know, and like, I don't know, I just, I, I think like.
Well, I, you know, dude, just to, I, like, I just wanna sort of follow up on your point cuz like, you know, like I remember quite clearly an incident where like, you know, I think it was in like two thousand and seven, like, um, maybe, um, there was like an incident where a whole bunch of people went around and they stole every sign, like screw political party, like they stole literally every sign and then put them all in the PES lawn. Like, and there was, I remember there being a photo in the paper and it was just like every fucking political sign and like the whole town was in one spot. And it was like, I don't know, like I, you know, obviously, whatever, but it, it was kind of funny like at the time. But I think the, so to me, and you know, like, and Jonah's actually spoken on this, like just, and, and something that we'll talk about more too in like our upcoming deep dive segment, but, um, just like the connection of like right wing online media through websites like 4chan or, you know, Reddit, like the, with the proliferation of spaces like that, where it's not necessarily like, there's a whole lot of change on like political candidates, but it's like a, it's a polarizing space, you know what I mean? Um, that really deeply affected teenagers to Anna's point, so that like, teenagers to Anna's point, so that like, if Zach, like, here's Zach on this call today, making a bunch of, you know, very solid left points and copping to the fact that he did, you know, had engaged in this behavior way back when. So what's the difference between Zach and and the the white male teenager stereotype archetype, whatever we're gonna use is sort of like a stand in for this. And I'm not making any assumptions about who did it, although I would be very inclined to believe that it was some sort of right wing teenage white guy. That's just my my general, um if I if I had to take a stab in the dark, um, and to me, I think about like, okay, what's the difference between that kid and, you know, Zachariah, you know, fif- fifteen years ago? Um, you know? And the difference is the proliferation of right wing media and being alienated in a hyper tech savvy bubble. You know what I mean? Like, that, that relationship is um I think it's 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 the key difference and why we need to be, why it's important to look at the theft of BLM signs as opposed to political signs like what we had seen before, why this is uniquely different, especially given the time and the place and the likelihood that it was just some teenager that, um thoughts on that?
I think to that end, I mean, like what Zach's talking about with the tension, another big part of that is like Q and on, and the people that like, these right wingers think they're saving the world from a cabal of like right wing pedophiles that are at every level of governance. And when you think you're saving the world, you're not even gonna consider what the other person is saying. So like, if we come to this protest and half these people believe in in Q and on or like where we go one, we go all. And then, um uh, we come as counter protesters and they they they're instantly gonna think that we're in support of the people who are pedophiles or they're people who are, you know, running this cabal of evil and we're never gonna get anywhere with them. And it it creates situations like Kenosha because these people are so wrapped up in whatever they think is actually going on, that one Black Lives Matter sign resulting in another Trump's, in a couple of Trump signs being stolen by another teenager could flip someone's switch. And then in the next rally, we have someone, I mean, they're already bringing concealed carry weapons to these rallies. So we could have a a situation in which a really, really scary thing happens, just because we didn't uh, consider that an option because we live in Peterborough, this, this very perfect pristine town. And I think that whenever it hap, whenever a situation like that happens, whether it be Kenosha, Charlottesville, I'm sure that all these towns thought that they were very safe, you know, relatively safe, relatively, you know, had a good community. And then this happens. And then they're like, oh, how did we not recognize this before? It's these steps, it's the stealing of the steins, it's the right wingers coming out of their caves. Like, these are precursors to what could potentially be something very dangerous. And that's very scary to see.
Well, I, I think that was quite succinct and an excellent uh, encapsulation of the problem and why it's important for us to show up and continue to do this stuff at events like what's coming up this Saturday. And for us to just have each other's backs on the BLM sign thing and just, you know, like, I mean, there's only so much we can do about that, which is fine. Um but yeah, you know, show solidarity and I, you know, my hope is that we get to see more BLM signs up after this, you know? I I know we're trying to get one for my yard and I didn't have one before, so um kudos on that. And if anybody knows any any sources for them, uh, hit me up and we can get it in the link for this video. But um thank y'all so much for taking the time today. Uh, Anna, Zach, Jonah, this was, this was great. This is like very first panel thing ever, and it actually
Worked out great.
Yeah, yeah, I think it went pretty smoothly. So it was, it was a good time. So awesome, y'all. Well, thank you so much and we'll catch you later.
Thank you.
Yep, bye, guys.
Bye.
Alright. There we are. That was a very pleasurable discussion, uh, covered a bunch of ground there. And, you know, huge thanks to Zach Green, Anna McGinnis and Jonah Wheeler for coming on and and talking about all these issues. And it's gonna be it's gonna be a real time this weekend. We'll see what happens. I will try and get video up and out to everybody. Uh head over to patreon.com slash locally sourced, become a subscriber and help fund this delightful platform, uh, filled with local uh, and state left ideas and theory and discussion. And um, you know, you can hit the subscribe button right over there, little bell for notifications. Uh, follow us on Twitter, like us on Facebook. Uh, we, I did a interview with Marcella Termini yesterday. Uh, absolutely, absolutely check that out. Very, very important discussion about disability rights and the value of home and family. Uh, she's running for District forty-three. I also had a bonus episode with uh David Matthew yesterday afternoon. We streamed that. That was a a good discussion uh, about a whole, just just a variety of things that are happening right now in the uh, in the current climate. And we talked, uh, to sort of follow up on something that Jonah brought up today, we talked about Q and on a bit. Um, so you can unlock that now today and watch it right away if you become a member. Uh, this, the episode will be available tomorrow, uh, publicly. So for anybody who, you know, if you don't have a way to sign up, you can always hang out and it will be to you shortly. Back again tomorrow afternoon, we're gonna be doing another episode of Deep Dive, Jonah and I. So that's definitely something to keep an eye out for. And I think that does it for updates uh, with the channel. And yeah. Good to see y'all. Back again, just making it happen. So thanks so much for coming out to the first panel episode. I know that was um little uh, little different uh, different than than normal, but I'm, I thought, I thought it went quite nicely, so. Cheers, folks. Catch you later.